From St. John Paul the 23rd. Consult not your fears but your hopes and your dreams. Think not about your frustrations but about your unfulfilled potential. Concern yourself not with what you've tried and failed in, but what is still possible for you to do. And so as we move on to the board, I would hope those words would guide this board and our executive staff to make decisions that will recognize and perpetuate the hopes and the dreams of our tenacious classroom teachers and our precious students. Decisions that will recognize and inspire the unfulfilled potential of our tenacious teachers and our precious students. The decisions that will instill and perpetuate the future and possibilities of our tenacious teachers and precious students. We ask this in your name, Your Boarding in. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Move approval?
Second. From a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Do you have any citizens' comments? Thank you. All right. School operations, Mr. Mullin. We've got somebody here for the, to approve the amendment. There you go. Ms. Alguerella has to approve the amendment to the 217, 218 Code of Student Conduct.
This is to advertise.
Well, it says approve the amendment.
Can I approve the amendment to?
No, 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 no.
You gotta present it for me?
We've gotta change it.
We just have to get approval to advertise.
Approved to advertise, don't say approve the amendment.
No, no, I was gonna read it. It later says to advertise.
Okay.
She's gonna go ahead.
We're good.
Approve the amendment to the 2017, 2018 Code of Student Conduct to advertise the amendment for a public hearing at the October 10th, 2017 School Board Meeting.
Just a point of reference, a point of order, I mean. I think, Mr. Kennedy, what we're saying is we're not approving the amendment, though, right? We're only approving the advertising.
Yeah, I'm reading, I was reading as they, that's how we've always been instructed to say, so.
So I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy?
To approve the amendment, to approve to advertise the amendment.
There you go, right. Will you second that, Mr. Dodd?
I will second that.
Now, do you have anything you can say?
Now, unless there's any questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bishop?
Could you approve the secondary and dual enrollment education courses agreement?
This is a.
Did you get your parents' home?
Did I get my parents' home?
Yeah.
Oh, no, not yet. I'm, this weekend.
This weekend, okay.
So if you have any questions for this, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
You have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the secondary dual enrollment education courses agreement between our school board and the Sub County School Board.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Count. No any questions?
Is this typically the time that we get this, or was this?
No, it should've been a little earlier. We just, between Sub County communication, it took us a little longer. This was me for them, our own articulation, well, our own articulation agreement that we had the last several years, they were not paying for any costs, so it took a little more discussion on their part to make sure they were covering the costs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Suzy?
Is that microphone, Suzy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
I can't believe, I can't believe Adam Penney is leaving Christian for middle school because he keeps that placard hanging.
Good seeing you.
I didn't think he was allowed it.
I don't think he is allowed. Everything but an animal penion. He's supposed to be leaving in December, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
You mentioned to tell me, she's like, really? It just doesn't sound right.
Not right.
Scoot me out.
We love him.
Go ahead and make a motion, approve instructional and support recommendations.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Okay, quick update. We have hired so far this year 105 teachers. Currently, we have 38 long-term subs in vacant positions. We have 33 positions posted, but you know, in our world, it is constantly moving, so we do have teachers being hired currently at this time, so they will replace those long-term subs. We have 22 in the elementary, 10 in the middle school, and 6 in the high school. 26 out of those 38 have degrees. Four out of the 38.
26 out of 38.
26 out of the 38 have degrees. Four of the 38 are certified, but those four have, for whatever reason, not come back. They may be retired teachers, just long-term subbing to help us out. And 18 out of the 38 are working towards certification, so that number was higher than what I originally thought. So the 18 out of the 38 are working, they either need to take a subject area test or the general knowledge test.
Board and Superintendent, we've talked about this in the past, but I think it's still worth exploring again, and that is our great retired teachers and utilizing them.
What are you talking about?
And utilizing them in a more creative way to fill some of these positions, especially, I'm thinking at the high school level, where we have sometimes the most difficulties in the maths and the sciences. I know they have contract services that, that we could run them through, that potentially maybe there's a teacher that says, listen, I'd love to teach one course for this next semester. We wouldn't necessarily have to worry about one position or two positions, we could maybe do that. And I'm just wondering if it's really time to re-explore some of those options again.
I believe when they come to us and they talk about retirement, I think Suzy and we do have that conversation with them, if they would like to come back, we can certainly pursue it and be a little more persistent on it. I know in the elementary world, we've hired a few of them who'll come back to teach full-time even, so.
Randy Housen's back.
And, and we've had administrators that have come back into the classrooms.
And we're not opposed to that.
But I'm, I'm thinking in the past that, you know, we've been a little more reluctant to say, well, we wanna split a position or something, but we don't have that luxury anymore, and.
But some of them are getting drawn to me more.
Well, and, and that was my question, is if they can run through a contract service, then we can rehire them the next day. So, I mean, I just.
We have a relationship with contract services now.
That we could do that.
Where we can't fill a position.
Because, I mean, I, I can think of a number of teachers in the, you know, in the Teachers' Retirement Association, or the group that's here locally, that they've talked about, they love to come out and do a course.
We will, we'll put that on our administrators, principals, me, and we'll make that announcement with the principals, that if they have any teachers retiring, or there was any who have retired, that they can certainly work through that contract service and come in early, if that's their option.
And I wonder if maybe we reach out to like Terry Rooks or somebody, and, who's, I think she's president of the.
Retired Teachers.
Retired Teachers.
And we have sent out that list, not this year, but we have sent out that list in the past of retired teachers, so that principals call the retired teachers and make those connections. And to, based, from the direction of Ms. Moll, we do pay, if they come back to be subs or come back to us, we do pay fingerprinting and drug testing, we cover that cost for them.
And that's huge.
So, yes, because we appreciate them coming back.
Okay, Terry's president of the retired teachers, I'm secretary, so there is gonna be a push to, the focus has been more on having lunch than anything else, I think, in the past, and so Terry's young and aggressive, and, and so she's gonna make a move for what can that group do to help our teachers.
Very good.
You know, they've been focusing on selling baskets and raising money and scholarship for kids, but I, I think the focus is gonna change for what we do for our teachers.
She is skin in the game, her son's one of our teachers.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lane. All right, attorney legal matters. All right. Other business that needs to come before the board, Mr. Mullin. Ms. Powers. Ms. Count. No. Mr. Kennedy?
Just to thank Mr. Mullin and Superintendent and staff on addressing some concerns with our new recess requirement and mandate, and I think that the district is trying to do everything we can while balancing the challenge of mandate of having a structured physical activity time and a free recess. And I do think that we need to, as we talk to our legislators, and as we build our legislative agenda, we need to get that SPA removed out of the mandate, because, you know, they gave us SPA, now they've given us recess, they haven't given us more minutes in the day. And we're doing what we can, but it's, it's challenging and parents are not happy.
No, they're not. I talked to, I talked to a parent yesterday, and I said, we need to call Tallahassee.
Yeah.
They're, they're the culprits. And what they, what they're doing at this one school, with this precious little boy that I know, is having him out there right before he has to go home for 10 or 20 minutes. He's exhausted. He's a little guy.
Well, I, I think.
It's hot.
It should be a local control issue, and it should be, it should not be the legislators making decisions in our classroom.
If I were making a decision for that child and his classmates, we would be in the air-conditioned room, sitting on the floor, and having stories told to us.
Do you chocolate?
No, if you chocolate, somebody might be allergic. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Mr. Dodd?
I'll save all my comments for the health insurance update.
Oh, no you won't, okay.
I have a smile on your face.
All right. It's adjourned, and now we're going to workshop.
Thank you, Ms. Fredjow.
Thank you.
Good morning. All right, I'm here just to get the board's feedback for our 2018-19 school calendar. So we do this every year, this is our first step of the whole process. Of course, you can't read that, there's such, there are tiny, tiny names there, but it's all of our calendar committee.
No.
Which is basically showing that we have representation from all schools, from all levels, throughout, throughout the district. Our timeline.
One second.
I'm sorry.
The Citrus County School Board is blank.
To the right, to the right. The committee member is Sandy Count.
Oh, I see, okay. What is the, the left one?
We are not blank.
If you have a principal or supervisor.
We're a bunch of things, but we're not blank.
I've got my new.
I'm sorry, that middle column.
Our one up.
Right, that middle column.
Okay.
It's our committee, right, I should probably put this on two slides.
Sandy, Ms. Count is our representative.
Ms. Count is our rep. That is correct.
Thank you.
So, our timeline, starting with today, is step one. I come and I seek input from the superintendent and the school board regarding the calendar. And then from that point, we list our calendar committee members to all of our schools, and we notify our committee at least two weeks prior to our meeting that we are going to be having on September 13th. The calendar committee, of all those people that you just saw before, are going to meet on, like I said, September 13th, to develop two or three calendar options. We then submit those options to the board and the superintendent for review and approval. That'll be in October. We, once we utilize the input to finalize, no more than three of the options, we submit it to all staff and SAC committees for their review and vote. Principals, of course, we advise them and remind them to schedule a SAC meeting during that time. They have then, within 30 calendar days, to then, you know, vote. Each employee has one vote, and each SAC, each school, has one vote. And then, of course, they calculate their votes and they send those to us, to the district. We then have a subcommittee on, in November, November 17th, that gets together, and it includes a CCA rep. We tally the countywide vote, and then on December 12th, I come to the board again to share what the majority of the support was, as determined by the vote, and submit it to you as recommendation for approval. And if the calendar is rejected by the board at that time, the calendar committee then reconvenes, and we go back to step four and continue on. Any questions with the timeline?
Well, I guess my only question would be on number 12. I mean, it's the ultimate decision of the school board, correct?
Correct. So if the calendar is rejected by the school board, the calendar committee reconvenes to act upon those recommendations from the school board, and the process begins again at step four, where we reconvene, where we notify the committee that we'll be meeting again, and we redo the calendar options, of course, and go through the whole process again with the voting, and then coming back to you.
Okay, I, I just, you know, I, I thought that the school board makes the final approval, or makes the final decision.
Correct.
Okay. So if the school board decided on step 11 to approve a calendar, it wouldn't have to go to 12, would it?
Correct. Okay, no, no, so number 11 and 12 are on that same date of December 12th. So on December 12th, I come to the board, the calendar comes to, like, I show you what the majority of it was, I tell you what the votes were, and then you, you then approve the recommendation from the district, or you don't approve it. If you don't approve it, then we go back to the committee and start over. You approve the, like, I tell you who the majority was, the vote, the, what calendar option was voted for the most. If you approve that, if, we then go forward, of course, with that as our new calendar. However, if you do not approve it, you give our, you know, the feedback of why and so forth, we then reconvene and start over with step four.
It would be just like textbook or anything else, we approve or we deny.
Correct.
And then the process repeats itself.
So, one of the things that I made a point on last year was to have some options on the, the, the calendar, you know, that they are not just one or two days different, everything's the same. I know we're bound by testing, and when we can start school, and all those things, so there's some limits, I understand that. But my hope is that the calendar committee can have some true options for teachers, because I, I thought the way I read the law was, we, we set the school calendar, the school.
You do, but.
Tallahassee.
I've served on that committee for a number of years. If you sit in that room, you're talking about moving an inch one way or an inch another, because the number, they, they can say, we're gonna begin here and end here, and then they give you all the test dates, and you cannot have your, your holidays, your time off during those test dating calendars.
Maybe one semester one to have similar number of days as semester two.
So, wait until all of those mandates are added back in, there is no movement. You have one day or two days different.
And so I guess.
So there isn't flexibility.
Part of my point I'm making there is, why do we go to all this extreme when there's no flexibility? Why do we put all these man-hours into this process when there is no flexibility?
Just make that calendar and stick with it, is that what you're saying?
We do.
Possibly two extra options versus three, is that what you're saying, would be, I mean, we are, you know, we're required by law to, of course, go through this process.
Absolutely.
So we're required by law.
And you have a bargaining contract that requires.
We can bring two, we can.
Two options versus three.
We're still gonna go, I don't know that.
We have to, we can't do more than three options by law.
Here's the, the one thing, our district has been praised around the state, and even within the communities, of having one of the most transparent collaborative processes. So while you may have been frustrated with the idea of that there wasn't a lot of options, the most people were involved in trying to create a calendar that best fit the needs of not just the teachers, but the parents in the community as well.
Definitely, I would say.
And so, without this process, you're circumventing them.
No.
This process is, is what is necessary in order to come out to an outcome that has that transparent and collaborative process. Is, if you can think of another way to do that, I'm not, just not sure how you would without removing this process, is the process.
Well, I think that, I mean.
That didn't make any sense, and I understood it perfectly, to be honest.
Yeah, that last statement, but I appreciate that, and I appreciate that we have involvement, definitely we want to have involvement, but I'm just saying, when does it come to the point that is the work of this committee and the extreme number of members that it takes to do this? At what point do we get to when we say, well, there's, there's no options, I mean, we're bound by these state dates and times?
These are the options, or, when half-day, when half-days are not.
I would like to see the law.
May I answer that?
Yeah, sure.
Really?
I don't disagree with you, okay, 'cause I hate wasting people's times, and they put a lot of time and effort in this, and I think when the options are put out there, it's pretty transparent, I think there's a lot of people involved, and I think the point goes back to tell the schools, you have representation on the committee. We know that they're pretty well locked into timeframes, mandates, test dates, Christmas holidays, and those types of things. So there aren't a lot of options to those calendars across the state anymore, especially since the legislators now tell us what day to start school on. So, I can't wait till August 10th, on a Saturday, we may have to start on a Saturday one year, but, but I don't disagree with that.
Right.
I don't know that that will ever come, because it's also part of the union contract, and maybe that's a conversation we have with the union contract, to see if maybe they want to, you know, streamline a little bit. I don't know that answer, but we could certainly take to the table, but especially with the restrictions we have, so.
Well, it's just a, a good discussion to have.
Right now, it's, it is what it is.
Well, we have, and I know you know this, Mr. Dodd, we have a lot of processes that are required under statute. We have a textbook pop process, selection process, that has gotten enormously larger, and it, it requires a great deal of, of time and energies. We have a number of times, anytime we make decisions, we want a collaborative, transparent process, and that does take man-hours to do that. If we wanna just make unilateral decisions, we can do that at times, but that may not be the, the best decisions come out of those processes.
But we would all agree that if the dates that the state gives us is so set that there's only one option, then we don't have to have a committee, right?
There are.
But do, do we agree to that?
No.
Do you agree to that, because if there's a time that comes where this is the only option you have?
They're never going to tell us when our half-days have to be.
That's exactly it.
Or, or things like that.
When you're professionally.
Or week off for Thanksgiving, or those kinds of things, they're never going to give us that, that exact. So there always will be a variety, maybe just not the variety that you're wanting there to be between two options.
Right, I mean, last year's options were what, one day.
There were half-day differences, you're right, like, there were, basically that was it, we had the same beginning and ending. We did have differences in when we came back from Christmas break, when teachers started, when students came back, that those kind of changes were there.
Right. I just, it's just, I'm just looking at the man-hour it would spend on this, if there's not, there are any options for it.
And I think this is a non-negotiable example of local control that we don't have.
Right.
Absolutely.
I, you're right.
And it's one of those things that they tell us local control, but yet they dictate pretty well everything that goes in our calendar.
And this has dramatically changed, this process has been in place for over two decades, and it has been primarily in the last six years that this changed dramatically, because Citrus County, for a number of years, took the option, through the calendar committee recommendation, to take a waiver and start school early, because we felt it was in the best interest of our students.
High achieving schools.
Right, because we were high achieving a district. The state decided after they had listened to Disney, and that was exactly who lobbied the, the state legislature, to set the dates, they, we had to, you know, we had discretion, we had flexibility. So this process is still one where, again, local control's been taken away, the mandate for the process is still in place, and we still have mandates requiring bargaining. And I'll tell you, as a parent, I wanna have some input. The SAC's input is critical. The SAC's, you know, having a representation on there, talking to the teachers and saying, well, some, I mean, some teachers and, and parents will say, I want a week at Thanksgiving. I don't want as many half-days, or I'm okay with some of those half-days.
Well, I agree, but Thomas, the SAC committees that I were on last year, there, there weren't any of those options. It was one day on the, one or two days on the either side of Christmas, everything else was the same.
No, you're, you're talking about a completed calendar. I'm talking about when they are, those, there are parents that are in the calendar committee, representing those conversations.
I'm, I'm talking about the SAC committee, when they got to vote on the calendar, there wasn't any rules, I mean, it was they were all.
No, because they already had representation that was in the committee.
Yeah. Why don't, do we have, every SAC committee has a?
No, no, you have parents that represent.
Right. I just, I mean, that, that was just some comments that I heard from last year, that we're, we're our choices, but, you know, it is, we're bound by what the state gives us, what the state mandates us, and I understand that. Now, the other issue is, I wanted to get the position on the county fair and spring break, because if I recall, this is a year where the fair board voted for a year that's not gonna fall, it's gonna be a testing week, was that right? Am I remembering that correct, or is this gonna be?
For a year is the problem.
The year that we have right now?
No, this is next year.
Oh, no, no, we're, we're still gonna be up in 1819.
One of them, the fair dates, or was it this?
I have it right here. This is, when I'm talking about, like, things to think about, the county fair for 2019 is gonna be March 25th to the 31st.
Right, and was that?
It is not going to be during, that's not testing.
Okay.
Right, that's what he was saying.
That's right.
This year, I think there was a major conflict, but not, coming calendar you're working on.
Wasn't this year the year the fair changed the week?
But they, they signed their contracts early.
Right, so we already know the dates.
Right, 'cause we, I went on their website with the, our fair people, and.
So, Amy, I think the question is, is 2018 the year that the fair week and our testing week were in conflict, or was it 2017 that was the issue?
No, it is during the window, however, it's not going to, we're still gonna have enough testing days within it, and it's only affecting, I believe, our retakes, you know, our retakes.
So is the fair week in 2018 coincide with spring break?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, this year.
So it was this 17 year that we, they weren't?
It was, right, it was last year.
It was the 17 year that they couldn't hold, because they changed vendors. The fair changed vendors after we had settled the calendar, and they had changed their dates.
Right.
So 19.
All of our options last year when we voted had, had spring break and the county fair during the same.
So that's what it was, it was, it was 2017 that was the issue.
So this 18, we're, we're good.
We're good.
We're good on that, but 19, we don't know.
That's gonna be up for discussion, I mean, that's what we're gonna be creating the options regarding, we know when the county fair is, in 2019.
Right.
It's gonna be March 25th to the 31st, and so that's gonna be, of course, presented to the committee when they are coming up with the different options, and these are things to keep in mind if possible.
But do we know testing week yet?
Yes, we do, we have the testing calendar. Now, that's.
But I, I think that's what our board needs to say, they need to say today, that you want that week off, and you want it to coincide with spring break, so that when Amy goes to the committee, she can say, this is non-negotiable.
Right, here's the thing, Ms. Moll, and the last slide that I have here is where I do want your board recommendations, and I will, you know, put down what your recommendations are, like you were saying, those non-negotiables, and I do have up here in bullets the ones that you have previously stated in previous years for calendar committee. But before, you know, I hear about those, I wanted to just kind of give you an update that there was a legislation change that will affect our 1819 school year, wherein House Bill 7069, and this, of course, will be presented to the, to the committee as well, that testing in 1819, they basically said that the big piece is that all of our computer-based testing, which is the majority of our testing, is, has to be administered within a four-week assessment window that opens no earlier than May 1st. So that would mean, May 1st, we would have to have school for four weeks following May 1st to be able to abide by, or even just to get all the testing done that needs to be done. So that is something that is a huge difference than what we have done before. Normally, our testing is done by the second week of May, for the most part, our major, you know, big piece of FSA and FCAT. So that is something that is going to first time be implemented in 1819. And so that legislation change is something that is going to, of course, affect our school calendar if now we are not able to end school earlier than the last day of May. So that's one thing. And of course, our county fair and then other testing windows, like our AP testing and our ID testing, which, again, like you said, ID testing window is going to May 24th in 2019. So again, that is going to the end of year. But in the past, we have had times where ID students actually did have to come in after their graduation, they walked across the stage and actually come and take an ID test. And they're okay with doing that, but of course, in the best world, we would want them to, of course, complete their testing before graduation.
But May is going to be one test after another for, for high school in particular.
Oh, absolutely, being that they're putting it all in that four-week.
EOTs.
FSA.
FSA.
Correct.
It's, it's going to be a tough month.
Yes.
There's going to be a lot of instruction going on. Because it usually disrupts the day when you have the testing at the, at the high school level.
But they did put it all in one, like I said, in that one month, but that is going to affect our ending date in all of our options when you see that. So when we look at what our previous board recommendations have been before, the board previously recommended that Veterans Day be a holiday for both students and staff. You've always asked us to commit to recognizing and accommodating for the Citrus County Fair. And the state testing was a priority, but always trying to accommodate that. We, you've recommended before, two weeks in December for Christmas break. You've asked to keep in mind opportunity for hurricane makeup days, one week off in November, that being Thanksgiving break. Last year, we added those two bottom recommendations based on, I believe, feedback that you heard from schools, administrators and teachers, saying those pre-planning days for instructional staff when we had the, you know, more than just, I believe, with three to five, now making it seven days if possible, that, you know, we really requested that and we did do that. And then support staff beginning before students' first day was another recommendation from the board. So like Ms. Biggott was saying, like, you know, these were things that, you know, were kind of like non-negotiables, like she said, that I present to the board when we meet next month to say, okay, well, you are creating your calendar option, keeping these things in mind. And then, of course, we hear from them also, what are some, you know, recommendations that they have heard from their staff and their parents and their SAC and so forth. And we kind of make a big poster of these things that you all recommend and then, of course, their recommendations also. So that way, when the committees are creating theirs, they're keeping those things in mind.
And this year's going to be a little bit more challenging because as the calendar rotates every year, this year, we started school on a Thursday. So for elementary, step by step, there still was two days before we went to a full week.
Right, because the statute says.
Fortunately, if you modeled this current calendar for next year, that would mean you'd start on a Friday.
Because the statute says that you cannot start earlier than August 10th.
Right.
You can start after August 10th. That is in statute. You can start after August 10th. However, you can't start earlier. And because of our block scheduling, we definitely want semester one, in the past, we've always wanted semester one to end in that December and then start semester two in January. And that also is a piece with dual enrollment and all of that as well. And so with that being said, you want semester one to be as equal to the days as semester two. So because of that, it's, you know, there's, you don't really have a lot of extra days in semester one to work with. So we've always went to the earliest day we could possibly start, which would be August 10th. And you're right, that would then be a Friday next year.
And that's, that's where that, that calendar flexibility is going to be a challenge. You know, I still believe very strongly in finishing the semester by this, by the beginning of the winter break. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I still think that needs to, you know, that, that has been the expectation, but that has not been the previous board's recommendation, although I think that was always the expectation. I'm not sure we shouldn't just add that, but that's just one of the board members' opinions.
You know, I totally agree with you. It impacts grades and everything else if you draw it out the left, because it's two weeks for.
And if they're doing dual enrollment, it really can impact them.
Absolutely. So are you wanting to add a recommendation of ending semester one before Christmas break?
Yes.
You're hearing.
And I don't know how the rest of the board feels. While I love, as a parent, the idea of Thanksgiving break being a week. And we have had to remove, put a disclosure about hurricane days being casually made up then.
Around the year.
The problem is, it's still very early in hurricane season and, you know, for it to necessarily be impacted. It wouldn't be bad to see a calendar, we, we had a parent last year that tried very hard to have one of the three calendar, potential calendars have a shorter Thanksgiving week option. So at least the people could consider that as an option. Where it also tends to help is because we tend to have, trying to fit enough days in at that first semester. So I don't necessarily think it's a board recommendation, but I, I would certainly say that it would be interesting, although I personally still would rather have the week for Thanksgiving, it would be interesting to see how people vote.
If that were, if that were another option, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So, I will say though, we had one time where Superintendent has done a great job getting hurricane days waived.
Yes.
But I will tell you, I remember one time when, years ago, we didn't get it waived. And the only people in our schools on Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week were the teachers.
Yes.
And the parents said, oh, we've already got our plane reservations. So you have to be very, very careful once you do it. And there was one year, I remember, we kept the kids after Memorial Day into June. And there was nobody there. They came and took their exams, but they did not come back to classes after Memorial Day. So we, we trained. It's really a mess up there on paper.
Yeah.
It's all student instruction. And the only thing I would add about, we had the Monday and Tuesday in school, but his parents knew those were school days. If we had to have a calendar like that, and they may not make the plans, but you're right, once their plans are made, they're done.
Their plans are made.
They're done.
Well, yeah, I was just going to say, it's not early in the hurricane season. Actually, the hurricane season ends December 1st. So it's at the end of hurricane season. So there is some flexibility there. I mean.
I'm thinking of like no-name storm. We've had some of the things that were later in the year when we needed to do. Well, last year, didn't we have makeup day? We, we were running a risk of makeup day last year because. Because they, the storm problems were far after when we would have been able to, you know, take that day. But you're right.
But are we saying that we're going to leave that a flexible?
I think we should leave it up to the calendar committees to decide about that, but it would be curious to see.
So you're saying remove the recommendation?
By the way, the truth is, I don't think that calendar will win enough votes to ever be recommended as the calendar to have.
But you're saying for the board to, like, to remove that as one of your board non-negotiables?
No, no, no.
I would say that.
Oh, yeah, I would remove that.
Yeah, okay, that's what you're saying, okay.
Yeah. But I, again, I would say, I'm still for the idea of it.
Right.
But we're even just have one option that didn't include.
Right, but I mean, you're so, when we say it's a non-negotiable, that means that it's something that needs to be on all three calendars. So if you want to remove, if you want it to be an option, then we're removing it as a non-negotiable from the board.
Don't remove it.
Got it.
Now, just to clarify, because I've got this year's calendar, that my handy little Chronicle published calendar that Superintendent.
I have a real one out here if you need to see a real one.
But, so our last day of school in this school year is May the 24th. Now, according to that testing window, the four weeks testing window, not to begin before May 1st, does that mean that we cannot, that the earliest last day of school would be the 28th, the 28th of May?
Right, because that's the last, right, they would need to, students would need to be in school for four weeks after May 1st.
Local control, Jeff.
So four weeks is 28 days. So that means the last day of school, the earliest it could be is May 28th.
Or June 1st.
Or, okay.
Or whatever.
So earliest it could be. And you've got graduations in there and everything like that as well.
You're correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Charles.
Well, some of our old calendars, Kath, had the kids come back and do their exams after Memorial Day, and that worked.
Memorial.
Come back to classes, doesn't work.
Right, I agree.
Wow, and in this, in this calendar for 18, World Day is the 28th of May?
What's the takeoff?
Well, we're set on this calendar now. Golly.
Well, you're right. Our holiday's part of the school calendar?
Veterans Day, I mean, days that we take off, definitely. You know, I mean, not all of them are required. So the previous board recommendations, is there any other ones besides the one week off in November that you were wanting to remove as a non-negotiable?
I'd just like to add a comment about our Thanksgiving discussion.
Okay.
If we needed those two days on Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week to make sure that we ended before Christmas break, semester one, I think that would be important to have those days there. You know, because we have tried to equalize the first semester, second semester.
I agree.
Right, and those are two days that we can continue to play with. And as long as we've given them enough notice that there's, those are school days, then they can make their plans accordingly. But I, I really like to see that semester end in December.
Well, that I have made as a, as a non-negotiable, starting in semester one before Christmas break.
If we have to balance out the days, that, those are two that we can play with.
And that's where I think removing that mandate provides that flexibility.
Any other recommendations?
You do an amazing job, and it is always exciting to watch that process. It really is.
And they're a good group of people.
Yeah, and I watched it from the other end. And the teachers, you know, maybe we're only talking about a half-day here or a day there, but they appreciate the input. And sometimes that one day is, is important to them. They do discuss it. And the calendar rep is all over the teachers, so this is one place where they do have a little bit of a voice. They give a squeaky voice, but they do have a voice.
And just really don't have a choice.
Yeah, it's a very important day.
Want to make it for white, don't like.
Well, I always made the recommendation as a teacher that we should never have classes on a full moon day, but that never made it to the calendar.
Or a eclipse.
Or a eclipse, yeah, probably a eclipse.
All right.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, health insurance fund update and renewal information.
Hello, Ms. Garnish.
Good morning. Give me just one second, I'm on power.
You can have two seconds.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I would just like to mention to you that this is a process, the renewal process that we go through annually. And we do have with us today Brian Branum from Crown. And he's an important part of our process. We meet together for renewal meetings to come to this point. This year, it was Brian, myself, and Mr. Blocker. And we also have Kim Van Atten with us, who is our employee benefit specialist. So she's in here with us today as well. Another part of this process that's very important is that we get input from our health insurance committee. So we met with the health insurance committee and shared this information with them and gathered input and had discussion on August 15th. And Mrs. Bryant was there. She's your board representative on our health insurance committee. So that has brought us to where we are today. So I'm going to kind of jump right in. First, we're going to do the fund update, which is the second quarter fund update. And I'd like to give you an overview of where we're at with claims. So we'll do the fund update first and then we'll go into renewal information and what we're looking at for 2018. So if you look at the claims data, shows you 2014, 2015, 2016, and then where we're at so far in 2017. I will share with you that we just got the information for July claims, and we were pleased for July claims, we're at 940,000. So we have had a good June and July as far as claims. Yes, yes. And then at the bottom, you'll see the total claims for 2014, 15, 16, and then where, where we are so far for 2017. The asterix, I'll remind you, for the 2016 column is because we got part of that back in reimbursements. That is not reflected on this slide that we've got.
One second. I would just like to publicly say that I know that Sheri and her team went out to the schools to educate our staff about when we're self-funded and those types of things because I believe a lot of them knew and understood the whole process and the plan. And they also did a great job on explaining to them how important it was to use the care here center. And we had several of our SAC members going out to other doctors, those types of things, which we still promote. But, you know, starting at the care center. So I think some of our decreases in, you know, let's pray I'm not talking too soon for August, but I think some of our decreases in our claims has been because you all went out and did that. So you did a nice job.
Thank you. I do think the education was an important piece. And Mr. Bishop helped us with that, Mr. Bama helped us with that. So it was a team effort. Also, the expansion of health insurance committee. We made sure at the health insurance committee meeting that we expressed our appreciation to them. I think they've been integral as well.
And we expanded it.
Helping educate. Expanded it. We have one from every site and every district department. And those folks are taking information back and encouraging our employees and helping educate our employees. So I do think that combination has been helpful. Just to give you a bit of a breakdown here, it just shows you, those are the same totals, of course, January through June. And it shows you the medical and the pharmacy, really just to show you how much of the claims dollars each month is pharmacy expense. That's not the pharmacy from the wellness center, that's pharmacy claims when they go to CVS or Walgreens.
Is the pharmacy at the wellness center in medical?
Yes, that's reflected in a different line item. You'll see that. Okay, that'll be a line item with the wellness center expenses on another slide. Okay, thank you. These medical claims are not wellness center, it's outside providers. These pharmacy claims are not wellness center. Okay, these are our monthly averages. When you look at January through June for the four years, that is what we've been averaging per month. So you'll see that we did have a big, a fairly big jump from 14 to 15. And that's when we had our really hard renewal last year to try to help compensate for that. But, but you'll see we are leveling off. And again, the annual average for 2016 doesn't reflect the Symetra reimbursement. But you'll see that with our claims trend, we're going along pretty well. Thank goodness that we're, we're going pretty well with that because we're in a mode right now that we're needing to build our reserves.
Was 24, I'm sorry, was 14 to 15 where ACA really kicked in?
We had some large fees at that point in time with the transitional reinsurance fee.
That's what I was going to say, so that, that's.
That was a factor. Also, and that's going to be another slide that comes up, that is another factor is having to meet that mandate, but then the migration to the plan that we're required to offer. These are our six months totals. When you look at six months for the four years, that, what we totaled in a six-month period of time. So again, last year was a tougher year than we had become accustomed to as far as our renewal. We had to make plan changes. We had some increase in our premiums, a little bit heavier than what we had become accustomed to. But you'll see that is paying off. That was the plan to build our revenue, that's what we needed to do. Our claims are fairly, trending fairly well. We needed to build the revenue. So by doing that, we were averaging in 2016, 1.150 in revenue per month. And now we're averaging 1.4 in revenue per month. So a significant increase in revenue per month to help us with our fund, hopefully to not have to borrow from the general fund or to use from the general fund, and hopefully to be able to, you know, continue along this path. So you've already seen this. This was the quarterly update from last quarter. So I'm going to go ahead and look at the second quarter, the fund update for the second quarter, which is slide eight. So just to remind you, that first column is what we budget for, what we anticipate to happen each month. And then you'll see April, May, and June. And this is just capturing a month at a glance, what actually happened in April, May, and June. So we'll just go down the April line. When you're looking at the premiums, we had budgeted 1.365. We were pretty on target there, a little low in April. The other revenue that comes in would be Department of Transportation. Our, our transportation department pays us back for physicals that are done there. The larger one that you see in June, remember, we occasionally get some pharmacy rebates back. So that was our total revenues for those three months at a glance. Expenses, those are the claims expenses, what we budget for compared to what we actually had in April, May, and June, our Florida Blue admin fees, the reinsurance premium that we pay to Symetra, the care here fees, that is for program fees, service fees, and pharmacies. So that's the line where you see pharmacy expenses from the wellness center. The wellness center other, those are things such as supplies, rent. You'll see in June, it's slightly higher, or it is higher, that's because of the rent. We pay the rent twice a year, so that'll show up on two different months.
Those expenses are after we've split, we've split the sheriff's department and all of that's been reconciled and steps up.
Yes. The care here fees are after reconciliation. The other fees, for example, the rent, we pay the rent in Beverly Hills, they pay the rent in Inverness. So you'll see the totals, the net, and then we, we plan for aggregate specific pooling. We have not had to use that at this point in time, but we plan for that in case we hit that reinsurance mark with any of our climates. So that gives you the monthly surplus. So again, that's just a month at a glance. When I total up that bottom line for all six months, we, we're sitting at from January through June at 1.5. And that's not considering, again, that we haven't had to use the aggregate specific pooling. Our actual fund balance at the end of June is at approximately 2 million right now, which is healthy, which is good. Again, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves. We know that typically, July through December claims will be higher. But, but we are trending along very well at this point in time.
But our July claims are lower.
Yes. So, yep, we are pleased with July claims. June and July were good this year. Hoping every. Hoping everybody's not saving things for August. They cover the cost of the wellness center in Inverness, we cover the cost of Beverly Hills. But then we track physician hours, we track pharmaceuticals, we track the use of the x-rays, and it's billed out and split according to the use, who used it.
So if, say, 40 people from the sheriff's department went over to Beverly Hills,
They would pay their percentage of what, they would pay their actual dollar that they spent there. We bill it out, we split out the bill. This is sheriff's usage, this is our usage, they pay for theirs, we pay for ours.
And there's more of us than there are of them?
Yes. This is just a reminder of recent factors. Again, the toughest expense here was from 14 to 15. And that's when, at this time last year, we were needing to make up for that. And just to remind you of the things that were affecting our plan that have leveled out somewhat at this point in time. But the high, the increase in medical expenses, increase in pharmacy expenses. We had several extremely high claimants that hit the plan. The Affordable Care Act, we have those fees, we have the mandated plan changes and the member migration, and then the actuarial requirements. As far as the mandated plan changes, that really is tying our hands. And you'll see that in a later slide as well. That we are forced to offer this. By law, we have to offer this plan. And they give us a cap on what we can charge in premium. And again, that's why we made that difficult decision last year that those folks can't use the wellness center. They're not supporting, they're not helping support the wellness center. So those are just a little historical on how we got to where we are today. As far as this slide, the green line in front, those are our actual expenses. So those are true numbers and it's a projection for 2017. And you'll see where we are trending pretty well as far as our claims. That dollar amount reflects our claims plus the amount of money it costs us to run the wellness center. The back line is showing you, had we stayed back in 2009, had we stayed fully insured, had we been going along claims only at an average of what claims go up nationally, that is where we would be at this point in time, potentially, if we were fully insured. That would be what our claims expense would be at this point in time.
And does that, just a question. Does that include not having the wellness center?
That would be on the back line if we didn't have a wellness center and we were paying all our claims to private folks.
Got it.
And then the front line is where our claims and the running of our wellness center, that's the actual dollar where we're at. So we obviously made a good decision, we just have to continue to manage the plan well.
I talked with someone in government, they talked about medical situations. They say that we're going to go to a one payer system. Point line. Yeah, syndicate, right, syndicate. How does that, how would that affect the wellness center? If we did happen, I'll say it happened.
I don't feel like I can speak to that. I don't know if anyone else is comfortable speaking to that. Okay, can you repeat the question? Maybe, can you?
The institution of a single payer system affect the wellness center?
How does a single payer, would it?
It's not there yet. And people I know who run hospitals say, I mean, that's what's going to happen.
You still, if you've got a single payer, obviously your dollars, you're not having the fund for health insurance. So really, it would be, it would just be a benefit for the employees to, because they would still need to have somewhere to go. It's just that you're now not paying for it. It would just be a direct expense, a cost for the district to have a health center. If you're not now having to pay for health insurance if you went to a single payer. You're the whole government.
Yeah, but the wellness center.
Well, I mean, you could still have the health center, you could still have it. But again, it would just be a direct expense. You're not, you're not having it to impact the claims for revenue. Even your budgets today, like you are today. It would be more of a benefit.
Who's paying that direct expense?
For the clinic now?
No.
Oh, if you elected to have a health center still, you would still pay for it. The government.
Well, I thought, when you're talking about a single payer system in government, is that going to be, it'd be a benefit like social security, but everyone, it'd be financed by taxes, isn't that socializing?
Medicare system for everyone. It's exactly, it would be like a Medicare system.
Who came up with this crazy idea?
And there's positives and negatives too.
No, I asked you, because every time I talk to someone who runs a hospital, that's what they say. You know, it's going to be a single payer system.
And you can already see the 2020 politics, they're already, you're talking, they're already talking about it again, so you're right, it's going to be pushed. Comes to fruition or not.
And for people, for our employees and things like that, the challenge is, would a single payer system have any more or less benefits than what they currently have under our system? Those will be the things I'm saying people will have to debate. And then will it be more or less the premium cost? And that's what I don't think anyone really has, there's a lot of ideas and concerns, but nobody knows.
Nobody, nobody knows right now. I mean, to look at the ACA, Obamacare, whatever you want to call it, really have, you know, the idea of, oh, it's not going to cost you anymore, you know, that hasn't worked out at all. We've seen quite the opposite.
That's true.
You've seen, you know, how many states where the carriers, you're down to one carrier, so there's, it really hasn't worked. And I think personally that it was set up that way to fail. So that, to your point, the agenda is to push the single payer.
There's something to that. The very same thing is charged by hospitals, is it? It's all set up to fail. Go on to the single payer, because everything's figured out right now. It's not going to work.
And, you know, taking, taking it out of your hands, controlling your hands and putting it in federal government's hands, isn't going to change anything. You're not changing, the system is broken.
It's gotten bad and worse.
So, so it's, my mind, it will be even worse. What you've done, you went self-funded, you're controlling your costs, you put the health center in, you're doing these things to help control your costs. But that's gone.
Your costs will rise.
Well, your taxes. Four years.
Your taxes are gonna, for sure. I mean, who's going to pay for it? I mean, right now, it's so adversely selected against the ACA as now. That's why you see these plans jumping out. Because the healthy folks aren't aching, it's the sick ones, so.
And that impacts the cost of, the pharmaceutical costs continue to balloon. And that is, in another self, one area that needs to be controlled. Because as you've seen, aren't.
Yeah, your pharmacies right now through seven months is 29% of your total spend. So we're talking about things to look outside the box to save on pharmacy. Because it will be, and it continues to be an issue. Depending on what you read, you know, specialty drugs will be, become more than half of your spend on your pharmacy, very quickly.
An area that the wellness center really, I feel, focus on and make a huge difference. Because I talked earlier that many of the medicines taken, they take for hypertension, all these kind of things that are lifestyle or work-related, or nervous, you know, the teaching you're doing. And all of those sorts of interventions can be lessened. And therefore, the need for the drugs and lessons, so I think the care center will have a very big impact.
Oh, sure. Before you started in 2010 with the health center, you had over 40,000 medications that were running through the Florida Blue Plan. Today, it's 24,000. That's the number of scripts that run through. What's difficult is, you know, we have transitioned a lot of those chronic medications, hypertension, those types of medications, to the health center at a very low cost. The problem happens is when you get a specialty drug come through, like a Harbony or a Savalde, or there's cancer drugs, they're very expensive. Savalde or Harbony is going to hit the plan for about 100 grand. For one full script, just about 88 day treatment. So it's hard to replace a lot of low cost. The frequency of that, trying to overcome $100,000 one-time expense is very difficult to do. So that's part of the reasons what we're looking outside the box to help control those specialty costs, because that's the big driver right now.
And the education that Ms. Arnich did, the Himmel you talked about at the beginning, that really does play a significant role in educating our members and our, you know, to be able to use the wellness center in a way that positively impacts their life and ultimately positively impacts those reimbursables in such a way that it keeps our costs down.
It's a good connection between what they do and how it affects their health. And sometimes you just don't get the benefit.
Right. One of the things that I've said this to Ms. Arnich that we've, we have got to help get across, this is not the school board's insurance company. This is our school employees' insurance company. We're self-insured, but this is, each one of them are the benefits and the payers of this system. It exists only because as a benefit to them. We could very easily have just gone to another, you know, insurance company and just, you know, had contracted it out and we would have, you know, been paying, we see, you know, 20 something percent more in premiums. We do this as a benefit to try and keep those costs down and profile it back. But this is really their insurance company. And that's why that education, I think, is so important to say, there is a direct, you know, financial benefit to them by better understanding how the insurance company works.
Very important, because if you don't have to spend money on this sort of thing, you can spend money on other things that will benefit the teachers and the students.
Absolutely.
So it's really a win-win situation if we work together to make it happen.
All right, I'll move along, thank you. So last year, we know, we did have, this time last year was a tough renewal year. This year is not nearly. We're in much better position right now than we were at this time last year. We are looking at potentially an 8 to 10% increase in premiums. Unfortunately, because our claims are running quite well and pretty much within budget or under budget at this point in time, we are able to stay in the single digits. When we went into this meeting with Brian, we went into the meeting thinking we would need to do probably a 10% increase plan in the premiums. However, we met, we looked at the numbers, and we're pretty comfortable at this point in time that it'll be the 8%. I've got both of these in this PowerPoint, because we're still ironing out some last-minute numbers that have come in. But potentially, I think we are looking at an 8% increase. And this is, I'm reminding our staff members that this, we're still in the mode that we need to build our reserves. We need to make our plan healthy. Fortunately, we worked really hard to not have to make any plan changes. So I'm pleased that we aren't have to do that this year. We went many years with no plan changes. Last year, we had the premium increases and the plan changes. So it was a priority and we were trying really hard to not have to do that and make the plan changes. When I met with the health insurance committee, I did talk to them about plan changes and premium increases. And they liked the idea of trying to not make plan changes as well. So as I go and I, as you look at these, if I could just point out in 2017, I don't really have a figure as to our premiums went up X number of percent. What happened in 2017 is we needed to increase our revenue by 23%. But when we went to that first meeting and we looked at that, we kind of looked at each other at the table and said, we don't want to tell everybody their premiums are going up 23% each, what else can we do? And that's when we started making some difficult decisions as far as plan changes. 5172, no longer having access to the wellness center. We did those types of modifications so that we didn't have an across-the-board 23% increase. So that's kind of a little bit of an explanation as to the 2017.
So what do you think the premium increase was?
As you know, as you know, it was not across the board. Remember, we had plans A, B, C, and D, and we configured it different ways. The one we landed on was as minimal an increase as we could for the single employees, the 1,100 people, or 1,100 people that were on the most popular plan, the 5168. So we tried to have the least impact on them. The employee plus one plan was costing the plan more. So those premiums went up more than a family plan or a single plan. So it's hard, there's, I can't really average that out, it was so all over the place.
All right.
To get the premium, to get the pot of money up by 23% our revenue. And a reminder, and this is something that I reminded of the health insurance committee as well, is that, yes, last year was a difficult year, but the board and Mrs. Himmel worked really hard and were very generous in increasing the board match to offset that. And so it went up $80 last year, which is, you know, pretty unheard of, as you all know, as far as increasing the board match per month. So even though it was a difficult year, it was helped and compensated. And I also remind them that we have not had to use any money from the general fund up until 2015. In 2015, we had to have a transfer of 800,000 from the general fund. In 2016, we had to have 600,000 from the general fund. We don't want to continue to do that, we don't want to have to do that. We're very hopeful when the actuary report comes out that we're not going to have to continue that. But we need to wait, of course, until the end of the year and we have that report. That's what we're planning for, we're trying to build that reserve and make our plan sound again. And it's not a quick one-year fix, it's a three-year plan. And we're in year two, we're looking at an 8% increase. We're hoping that year three, you know, it's too early to predict, but we're hoping it'll be a better year premium increase-wise. One thing I am reminding, and I asked the health insurance committee to help with this at the sites, is that when I'm saying it's not as bad a year with our premium increases, those that are on the single plan are going to say, what do you mean, it's more out of my pocket. Because we offset so much of it last year with the $80 board increase, the single plan only went up by a dollar or two for those folks. So this year, they are going to have an increase in their plan, not as great as last year's, but out of their own pocket, it will be greater because highly unlikely a board match like that again. So when you, you know, look at what the board match will probably be, that's something we need to prepare our employees for. So again, these are our three plans, and fortunately, we're not planning to make any plan changes. We're not going to have to increase the deductibles or the out-of-pockets. I do remind staff that we have a very rich plan. We've had new employees come to us and they look at what we offer them, and they're very pleased with our fairly low deductibles and fairly low maximum out-of-pockets. So our plan is still rich, it's still very comparable to what's out there. Last year, even with the plan changes and the increases, we did not have that much migration off of our plan. Our numbers stayed fairly solid, which was good. They went out there, they looked around, and they saw that it is still a very good, rich plan. So just what does this mean, what does it look like dollar-wise? These are our current 2017 rates. And then the next slide, page 15. If you just want to maybe focus on the last two columns, well, let me back up, I'm sorry. Look at the first column, the total plan cost per month, that is what went up 8%. So if the board match were to stay the same, this is what the employee cost per month would be, and then the employee cost per pay. And then if you want to, that's kind of the bottom line, what employees will look at is how much is it more is coming out of each paycheck? So the last two columns, the far right is what's currently coming out of their paycheck. And then the last column of the chart is what will come out of their paycheck with an 8% increase, with no increase in board match. That'll be negotiated as to whether there's, you know, perhaps a board match increase.
Mr. Blocker?
Yes, sir.
How much more did the legislature give us to be able to fund the increases in health insurance?
A lot.
A lot.
Our total funding increases were approximately one percent, but as you know, that was about a million dollars. So in effect, we're still paying from last year's health insurance increase of about seven hundred thousand, plus after us, it increased about three hundred thousand. So really, they didn't give it to anything. So we're just taking status quo where they gave it from last year.
So in order for us to have to cover the cost increase by, again, just the operations of having to have an A health insurance, we're going to probably have to look at modifying our budgets in other areas.
Greening efficiencies to be able to create a surplus.
That was a really nice way you said it.
Yeah, always does. Oh, yeah, that's good.
Unfortunately, that also means that there could end up having to be adjustments that can impact. And that's what I say, why, when I say this is not just the school district's, you know, insurance plan, it affects all of us. It's going to further affect our classrooms. It's going to further impact our teachers, you know, bottom line that they're taking home, our custodians, what they're bringing home. And those are the realities that, again, the more we can educate, the more they can understand of that. And that's why some people, they sit there and go, "I just can't afford to have health insurance, and I'll take the penalty." Because it's, you know, they're not paying tax, you know, they're making a limited amount that they're not paying much of a tax maybe anyway, so... And that doesn't necessarily help the overall system when that happens.
And education is key. I'll be going out to every site beginning mid-September and going over these renewal information, but also educating, you know, that we're self-insured, that it's their plan, and that we all need to work together to help keep things at a good rate.
And I do think we have to, again, marry up what increase because we are still having told out there that there are record-funded historical levels of educational funding. And the reality is, they're speaking in a very different terminology where they're also not including the number of increased students, which I know we haven't talked about yet, but we've had a significant increased number of students. And some of that, I know we'll get back in some adjustments, but there's a lot of costs that we have to build in that we're not going to get reimbursed for.
Always remember, there's a correlation between increase in students and increase in teachers.
Right.
The money you get back and the increase goes out, and the increase in teachers out. So there is a...
And our hope is that it covers it.
Correct.
So one of the things we have to be careful on, though, is that if we use this eight to ten percent increase in premiums, and yet you look at certain groups that are looking at a lot more percentage-wise than eight to ten percent, got to make sure people, we're not here to say eight to ten percent, and then when it comes time for them to pay their premiums, it's up twenty percent. So I would just caution, I mean, we've got to be careful because we don't want to mislead people. And I'm not, I know this is bargaining, or not bargaining, but it's going to be negotiated or looked at, and we might need to go into a shade session to be able to talk about that. I don't know when the right time for that's going to be. But I certainly hate passing on a huge percentage increase to the largest number of participants in a plan. You know, I think we need to have some discussion on that, on how we can, you know, keep people from having to hit a twenty percent or fifteen, you know, those are things that we need to talk about. Now, I did mention on the, I know Mr. Sternage talked about not changing the plans, and you know, we have, through bids and looking at options for providers, we've stayed with Blue Cross, which needs to be, the message needs to be, remind, or set, people need to remind it, that's a pretty good company. It's good that we're not changing that, because if we were to change that in light of still having to raise premiums, you know, that would really make people feel upset, I think, to know that their providers are going to change and we have to do a big change. So we're looking out for the best interest of our employees, and that's our goal. And, you know, when you look at it, a lot of it comes down to how we present it, and you've done a good job in how we educate people on using the wellness center and all those things. But this is big business. This is a lot of money that we're talking about. And Brian, you know my, the board's feelings is, we've got to make sure we're watching this, that we're saving as much money as we can, and there's no waste here, that we're trying to cut waste, we're trying to make sure our participants are using the plan wisely, and we're saving money where we can save money. Now, one of those options would be to increase the out-of-pocket maximums on the fifty-one, sixty-eight plan. And, you know, I talked to Mr. Sternage, we had a very good conversation. I know there's probably not a lot of savings there, but why, why could that not be an option?
I did have opportunity after you and I spoke to speak to Brian about that.
About a year, it was about fifteen months ago, and Mr. Bishop and Sherry and myself and...
You can step up to the mic so they can hear you.
We sat in a room and, you know, looking at the revenue. This was a revenue discussion more than it is a claims discussion. And you are correct in your, in the way that it is presented, it is a, we're talking an overall revenue of eight percent. Yes, from a percentage basis, depending on what the board match is and the premium calculations, it can, it would be more than, in some territory or in some groups, be more. You are correct. But when we, when we sat down in the room, we're looking at a revenue. What do we need in revenue to basically turn the ship around and then make it sound so that we're not coming back and have to say, "Well, we need eight hundred thousand, or we need six hundred." So we put together a three-year plan. Yes, 2017, big, big increase. This year, we're actually running a little bit better than projected. We had ten percent in our, in our number when we built the model, and in 2000, for 2019, we have eight percent built in. So we built it out to get to where the plan is actually, will stand on its own, so that when the claim seasons come, when we have a tough year, which they will, we can weather that with the, with the extra reserve dollars that we have. So we have to build that up, and that, that's the overall goal. And to Sherry's point, and to Karen and others that are educating the population to understand that we're self-funded, you know, when we have it, are deductibles satisfied, doesn't mean that we're off the hook, the plan is still paying? And that's, that's a common misconception out there. But, but overall, when you, when you make a deductible change or out-of-pocket, we're going to, we're going to get...
I don't want to make a deductible change.
Ah, I'm sorry, out-of-pocket. So if we, if we were to increase the out-of-pocket, let's say we get one percent credit off of our fund, off of our factors is what we call it, our aggregate factors that we use to calculate the premium, we might get one percent. So if our numbers are based on our claims are going to be twelve million, we're, let's say we expect claims to be twelve million, we're only going to get a hundred and twenty thousand dollar credit off of that.
Brian, I was involved in a lot of those conversations last year, and we asked the same question, "What if we give you out-of-pocket?" And he went through a couple scenarios where if we increased it, and increased some of them significantly, there was not a big increase in the fund, in our dollars that we were bringing in. I agree with Doug, because we had that conversation last year. Sherry, we don't go out and tell the employees, or do we, that we're increasing you eight percent? I mean, don't we give them individuals and what every plan will be in addition to? Because every plan is not eight percent, it's an average.
And I show them this chart, and I show them that the first column, that's what's going up eight percent. And yes, you're correct, Mrs. Himmel, that it all depends on what the board match would go up. And so it doesn't mean it's an eight percent out of their pocket.
So the first column's what it would go to for this current, for the upcoming year, correct?
Yes, and that's...
The next plan is what we currently show in board match, and if that increases, then that number would increase. And then, because everybody's sitting there looking at their individual plans and trying to figure out... And I agree with Mr. Doug, you know, when you tell me eight percent, and last year, twenty, what we hit last year?
Raise to Plan Three.
Yeah, well, my plan went up probably thirty, thirty-five percent.
Right, yes.
After I came off the ceiling, but, but that is a misconception to employees, because I would take as an employee, when I'm paying that eight percent of that, and that may not be my new payment.
So I think what you've got to look at in totality is you're trying to build the revenue by eight percent. The total revenue that's generated to cover the expenses. And when you're sitting there playing with the migration of numbers in each individual plan, those individual plans may not be eight percent increase, it may be fifteen, maybe twenty, to generate the numbers sufficient enough to cover the expenses that are going up with the plan on this eight percent. So it's how you kind of phrase the...
Then my suggestion would be, if you were going to show this slide to the employees, my suggestion would be, and it's up to the board also, health insurance rate, parentheses, eight percent increase to the fund.
Okay, yes.
Because when you say health insurance rates, eight percent increase, unlike everybody else, I'm reading eight percent, but if you seek to the fund, they may not know what that means, but we can certainly explain that to them.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. Agreed, board?
Yeah.
I agree.
Can I mention also on the fifty-one, seventy-two, that because of the ACA guideline, that one can't go up eight percent. It would be above the limit they give us. So unfortunately, I'm capped at how much I can go up for that one, and the rest of the plan is, make it up for it.
Well, the other one is to have to pay for...
Yes.
The difference at that point.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
We have to subsidize the premium on the other side because we can't exceed, this year, it will be nine point six nine percent of the pay.
Of the lowest-paid full-time employees, is that right?
That's correct.
It's how much...
Thirty hours.
It's nine point six nine percent for this, for this year are upcoming. So when the calculation is made, depending on board match and so forth, we won't be able to exceed. And Sherry has got with James Crook at CBG, and that, right now, that dollar amount is just right at ninety-seven dollars.
Right, that's the most, most that we can do on that one.
Which has no bearing to whatever the cost increases. That is an arbitrary number based on the percentage that we're given by the federal government, that it can't exceed any more than.
You, you can charge more. It's just then, when the plan gets tested, it won't meet affordability. And then if an employee, if an employee says, "You know what? I'm going to go to the exchange and get, and get credit," then they get a subsidy, then CMS comes to you and says, "Hey, we have an employee that's got," right? And they're going to hit you with the penalty. So for every person that, that does that, you're going to hit it with a penalty. So do you want to do that or not?
Our plan would not be meeting the mandate, and we'd be subject to penalty. This is what it would be if it's ten percent, but we are feeling comfortable that when I come to you in two weeks for an approval, that we'll be looking at the eight percent. That's, we're very hopeful for that.
Mr. Sternage, one more thing. And I've looked at this with you several times, so I apologize for this one. Is there a column for the board member's benefit, or can you tell them or send them, if I'm on Plan Thirty-three, Fifty-nine, what my premium would go to? And I know about the board match, but if I'm paying eight fifty-two this year, what did I pay last year?
You're sending it fifty-two.
And then, but they, they'll understand, but that number would go down if we increased the board match.
Okay, I'm not understanding what you mean.
I don't see eighty-five twenty-two anywhere on this thing.
You're talking about fifty-one, sixty-eight.
Well, I said thirty-three, fifty-nine, single. Fifty-one, sixty-eight, sixty-sixty-four. Where am I looking?
I don't know.
There we go. Eight percent slide.
Okay, eight percent.
That's what the premium is, yes.
If I'm on fifty-one, sixty-eight, single, and I'm paying six sixty-four for the coming school year, correct?
Yes.
What did I pay, what am I probably...
Your increase is thirty-six percent increase. That's what I'm saying. It's a thirty, your employee cost per month is going from one thirty-five to one eighty-four twenty. That's thirty-six percent. Now, we haven't looked at a board match yet, how much we increased the board match by, so that'll eventually drop. But if we weren't, if we did not increase the board match, that fifty-one, sixty-eight group is going to have a thirty-six point four percent increase in employee costs.
Do you see what we're looking at?
So I'm interested in that comparison. So this is currently what we pay, this is what we would pay.
Oh, I didn't read the top, sorry.
So that's okay. But you're correct, so we have to do this backwards because I have negotiations, so we've got to pull about, and then we go back.
And you go back, and we talk about...
We're negotiating.
Right. And see, the part that I, that kind of concerns me is, once we give the board match, it's going to be hard to take that away, which we probably can't take it away. So what my mindset is, how do we make it where it's not as costing us as much in premiums? And that's why I brought up the maximum out-of-pocket, even though you're, we're talking about a very small amount, I guess it's not going to help us that much. But what I'm trying to do is come up with ways that we can lower the premium so we don't have to increase the board match so much.
Right. And really, it's, it's the plan that we're putting forth, to get the plan to stand on its own. When you have three, four, five million dollars in reserve, and we need, oh, we need eight percent or nine percent to cover the claims cost for the next year, well, then you can look into that reserve, to dip into that reserve and say, "Okay, well, maybe we only need four. We'll let the reserve absorb the other five." That, and that's the, that's the overall plan, to get to that.
Once we get the reserves to that point.
Right. And, and right now, you, you know, you can't say that we're, oh, we can do a three percent or four percent increase, because with the migration, the way, it won't work.
So we don't have any reserves right now offset with, is that, is that kind of what you're telling us right now, or reserves aren't high enough to...
They're not high enough. All right. So right now, based on our projections that we did, when we set out that three-year plan, we are actually meet, actually above that goal. We're meeting the goal and exceeding it right now. Because you're having a good claims year so far this year, and I tell Sherry, I hate talking about the claims, she always cheats if something comes up. But we are, we are having a positive look on claims through seven months of 2017 right now. You know, it's less than where we were last year, which is a good thing. But again, it comes, it's a revenue. We're trying to build that, that reserve up so that the board match discussion is less or none, or, or you're not adding any more to it. And, and you're able to pull upon those reserve dollars when you have it to help absorb the dollars that we, that you need for revenue protection.
Out of our near twenty-two hundred employees in the district, how many are on our insurance?
We have sixteen, eighty on a plan.
So there's roughly five, six hundred that are not. And that also becomes always a question that comes up regularly, of those five, six hundred, that when we talk board match, too, that they receive nothing. And that's a, that's a, that's a comment that I hear on a regular basis. Every time you give it to them, we get nothing. And you're paying monthly a benefit to the employees that we also don't benefit from. Granted, the, you know, the two-thirds of the, of the staff does, but, so that's, that's an issue that continues to float out there whenever we talk about board match. So I always caution us that, and that's, that's on all sides of that issue. Whether you're on the bargaining team on one side or the bargaining team on another, remember, there, that's an impact that, that has to be, you know, considered, because there's a lot of people that say, "You're just, that's just money I'm not getting any value for." So when you talk about it, that's just money out of my pocket.
So that's always a subject of negotiations to balance out raises, you know, salary increase versus board match increase.
It is. It is always a, and it's a hard question. It's not one that I think is easy to answer.
Although they need to, they need to join our insurance group, is what they need to do.
Well, but some of them, they have, you know, they have spouses that have plans that are being paid for, other ones have military.
Yep, yep.
You know, for the longest time, I never had insurance through us because I was paying for it elsewhere.
There was a lady that was part of the health group that was so thankful, her husband was in the military.
Yep.
Because she's got his insurance, and I said, "You thank him for his service." And so she did, so, yeah.
Well, I can give you an idea on our timeline, where we're at at this point in time. We did meet with the health insurance committee. I've had opportunity. Mr. Blocker has had me on the agenda, and I've spoken to the Teamsters as well as CCEA, kind of caught them up on where we're at in our process. Board workshop, then we'll have, I'll bring it to you... Board workshop, then we'll have, I'll bring it to you for approval on September 11th, and then I'll start the school visits, where I go out to every site and every department and share information and educate. And then the open enrollment will begin, it's a four-week process, the first week is online, then there's two weeks where we have combined benefits group representatives who are at every site, people can sign up for a 15-minute slot to talk about their decisions for 2018, and then we'll finish up the open enrollment and get things changed and fixed and ready to go for 2018. I have a few other little updates to give you before I move off of renewal. Any other discussion about the renewal?
Well, my only discussion would be, I would like to have a discussion on bargaining, if we can do a shade session right after this, so that we can be clear on, on what the board's desire is. Would that be...
We can do that, yep. Board's desire of the plan?
Pardon me?
For out-of-pocket plans.
Oh, no, no, the, the...
Out-of-pocket, I mean, board match.
Board match, yeah, not, not the plan, because the, what's, yeah, what...
Yeah, we can do that, sure. Sure, I'll put it off.
Just wanted to share with you our Wellness Center utilization, just to kind of go over those statistics with you. So, when you look at both centers, Inverness and Beverly Hills, and you're looking at both schedules, Sheriff's Office folks, our folks, this is our total utilization of those facilities on the top line. We dipped down a little bit in April, we put in some strategies, we dipped back down in June, so we really are trying to hit those strategies harder to make sure that utilization is up. We don't want providers sitting there and not seeing patients. We want, we want to fill the schedules. If we need to cut the schedules back, whatever we need to do, we want our utilization to go up. And I feel like we see a little bit of a, an improvement in July, so we're going to stay on that and continue to improve. When you look at the second line for school district, that's just looking, it's looking at both centers, but what portion is being utilized by the school district? So, looking at both centers, month of July, 69% usage is by school district folks. Then we break it down by center. If you look at the Inverness Center, again, the top line's both schedules, Sheriff's Office and us, the total utilization of the Inverness Center is 80%. But then when you look at what percent is being utilized by the school district, we're utilizing 74% of the time and at the Inverness Wellness Center. And then the same for Beverly Hills.
Ms. Powers, I knew you had asked a question about how the billing. We, we track from the sheriff and from the school district. It's by employees, so if they, if I'm an employee of the sheriff and I get a lab, you're, you're not paying for that, there's no reimbursements back and forth between, if that bill goes to the sheriff, and then if your employee gets a lab, the bill comes to you. So, it's, we, we separate it at point of service.
There's no commingling of any funds.
The only thing that is...
They always keep an eye on it.
Yeah. So, even to the doctor's time, so what happens is, is the schedule, based on, we run the report, so the sheriff basically gets a bill for the balance at, you know, based on each center's percentage ratio. So, the only thing that is, is, you know, you're taking care of your, your operational costs in Beverly Hills, they're taking care of the operational cost, the rent and so, like bills and so forth, so that's not being...
Let me share schedule, schedule, times I ask, because I don't want, I had a timed schedule, I told them they couldn't find it all, that they wrote out, but we decided to take it in. But do they communicate with each other, like if Beverly Hills sends you over here?
Sure.
How do they communicate?
The staff needs a call down to Inverness, sure, they can, just look at, and they can pull the schedule up, and if, say Beverly Hills is full, and they want, and pull up Inverness schedule, sure, they can do that and book in, and you could go down.
I guess I'll just step off.
One other comment about, from an educational thing, that I think that the team does well, and we shared, we shared this on the annual review, is the amount of money and co-pays that the employees don't have to pay.
That is, that's a very good point. Because if you go to the Wellness Center, it's free. Well, you don't pay anything, you don't pay anything, so I guess...
It's even bigger than that, because you, you would have had a office co-pay. If you've had, if you have to have a lab, you're going to go somewhere and pay for that and a drug. So, it's, there's a lot, and we show it annually, what, what, based on the number of visits that we do. So, when you, when you look at, and again, most folks look at the paycheck, right, and what's coming out, but there is, there is an overall savings that they got to really look at.
Yes.
Some of those reports and the presentation that you've done or put together, is there any place to be able to share that online, so that employees that don't go, some, you know, that don't get to the meeting, or that we, when we get these phone calls and these comments, we can point them to the, you know, to the district website or something and say, "Listen, there's, here's information that shows what your savings is, what, you know, has, the benefits are, how insurance works." Because I don't know that we, we have that, and I'm not talking about reinventing the wheel, I'm just saying if there's presentations that, that we're doing...
Don't give Sherry another thing to do.
No, that's why I don't want to do that, I'm just saying if there's a way to capture it.
It is a mandatory meeting, and if they're not at the meeting, somebody at the school sends them the PowerPoint. The secretary has a list of who doesn't come to the meeting, and they get the PowerPoint. So, everybody should have it. And if they have questions, you know, they can call us. And at this, I think I'd like to just mention that Kim is fabulous. When she gets phone calls, she's, no matter how busy she is and how, she's pulling her hair out, she stops what she's doing, she's friendly, she tells people, "No problem," she doesn't mind helping them, so I mean, she's very, very good and friendly and explains things very well to the employees.
She took care of you this morning.
Good.
Yeah.
Full-time job.
Sherry, before we leave that last slide on the utilization, how is our no-show policy?
That's the next slide.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, no-shows.
Okay, so our no-shows, we did implement the no-show policy in 2016, from January through July, we had 400, and 2017, same timeline, we have about a 25% reduction in no-shows. So, that, that's good, it's helping. We've had 13 payroll deductions, that's 12 people, because one person has been dinged twice. So, 13 payroll deductions, and then in addition, two retirees we have invoiced for the no-show fee. So, we believe it's working. I think maybe we would have hoped that it had been a greater reduction, so we will spend time on that when I go to the schools to visit, as far as educating, you know, how it benefits all of us to not have no-shows, so...
Good job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you all.
What a thankless job you have.
I thank her all the time.
Oh, good, good, you keep thanking her. You keep thanking her. All right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. And then I'm opening the shade meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll come back at a quarter of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right. All right. All right. All right.